I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk called for all.
Commissioner Schlangen?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
Commissioner Kupinski?
Here.
Commissioner Heinon?
Here. Approve or amend the agenda. I see we have a couple additions.
Sure, yes. So we have consent item number nine. That would be the application for off sale liquor license. And then the second item would be added to 905 County Administrator, the letter of understanding with Law Enforcement Labor Services, Inc. That would be the last item under 905 County Administrator. And that's all we have.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the agenda as amended.
Second.
Most have been made in second. Approve the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Announcement by the chair. County board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that the views can be heard. The county board observes Robert's Rules of Order.
Robert's Rules of Order. For its meeting. So please obtain the board chair's consent before addressing the county board. Please comment. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment of the public hearing. However, public comment on agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today's meeting, please turn off your cell phones and turn your cell phones to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum. I understand we have one person back there. Thank you, Beth. Pam Benoit, come to the podium and state your name and your address.
Pam Benoit, 2875 42nd Avenue, Northeast Sock Rapids, Minnesota. Okay. I came because I have a couple of questions for the board. Not this last past tax season, but the one prior to that. I got a notice from the county stating that my taxes weren't paid. So I called to find out what was going on because it automatically comes from my checkbook. I sent an automatic payment comes from the bank. Part of this is my issue, and I'm going to own up to that. But what happened was the check went out to the county treasurer auditor's office in Carrie Thornston's name versus going in Nadine's name. So they, someone sent it back. I couldn't get an answer from the county auditor treasurer's office on who sent the check back to the bank. But a common courtesy call saying this was made out to the wrong person would have been nice. And besides that, the fact that then I was doing some talking and after I did some investigating and whatnot, and I looked into things. I'm wondering if things on the county board are different than the township board. For Scott and Jared that don't know, I am a supervisor and also a supervisor on the Minda Township Board. The rest of the people on the board know who I am. But, and I'm thinking that the county elections and the township elections are kind of in the same. I mean, you all have to live within your jurisdiction to hold an elected position office, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And our county auditor treasurer is also an elected position, which means that person needs to live within the county.
Correct.
Okay. That is not the case. And I would be shocked to know that this board and/or the county administrator or any other county officials in this town, in this county would not know that that is not the case. Because her address is 9745 166th Court, Southeast Becker, Minnesota. That happens to be Sherburne County.
Correct.
And she was, there was a letter, or in the St. Cloud Times on December 20th of 2017, the board had, it was in the St. Cloud Times that you guys had made an interim auditor treasurer permanent until election, and that was because Carrie had resigned. But in the township, and I'm not pretending that I know everything about the county, but in the township, when we had our treasurer resign, we could not, our attorney specifically told us, we could not appoint anybody outside of our township jurisdiction. Because we wanted that person had three months left. We wanted them to finish it. All they did is move to Sock Rapids, and it was not legal for us to do that. So I'm wondering how a county auditor treasurer got appointed that lives outside of Benton County and then was allowed to be put on the ballot after that for reelection.
Okay. I can speak to that a little bit and Monte or Steve that was here. First of all, when we appointed Nadine to auditor treasurer, that was totally legal to appoint because she was within the office. And they give us until January of that year, I think Carrie resigned in September, till January of that year to make her the permanent auditor treasurer. And she could, she didn't have to resign within the county until she ran for reelection. And she had 30 days prior to the election to establish residency in Benton County, which she did.
Where?
In Sock Rapids. And she still has a resident in Sock Rapids.
She does?
Right. Yeah.
Well, there's nothing listed on Benton County Beacon that she owns any property in Benton County.
She doesn't. She just rents, but that you don't have to own. You only, you only have to have established residence. I'm not 100% sure of what you do, but I think there was some stipulation that she had to have a P.O. box and a phone and some other things. And Nadine is here if she wanted to comment on that. But she did because we were quite adamant that we didn't want this to become, you know, an issue after she got elected.
Okay. Because I, we were asked, we asked on our township board also about getting a P.O. box so that our person could continue her stuff. And our attorney told us that that was not legal.
You know, as long as they would rent a place, it is.
And you have proof that that place is rented?
Yep.
Okay.
That's probably, Mr. Chair, that's probably something we can check into.
Right. I mean, we can, we can look into it, but I'm, personally, I know she lives, you know, within the city of Sock Rapids. She always has, ever since she got sworn in after the election. Or I don't know if it was 30 days prior to the election, I believe, right? Nadine is, yeah. She had established residency 30 days prior because my term and the auditor treasurer's term was up at the same time. And I was quite adamant, like, are you going to get this done? Because she went on.
Well, I'm just letting you know as the board that I did send a letter to the state auditor's office. Because to me, that's election fraud. I mean, when you do not reside within the, in the county, do not pay taxes within the county that you live in, that to me, you cannot be an elected official.
Yeah. You don't have to pay taxes, even in your township. You don't have to pay taxes. You can live in an apartment building and get elected to school board, township, anything, as long as you're, has established a resident.
Okay. And we'll leave it at that.
Okay. Well, thanks for the concern, anyway.
We'll let the state auditor's office then go from there.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. No one else on the open forum, so we'll look at the consent agenda. We have items one through nine. We're not going to read them. Does anybody want any of them pulled for further discussion?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Most have been made in second. Approve consent agendas numbers one through nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. 905 Monte.
Well, I thought it might be time to just have a little general discussion about the American Rescue Plan Act funds. I wasn't intending to ask for a specific plan to be adopted this morning, a specific budget, more so just share some of the information that I am seeing. And then just again, some general discussion about how we might be inclined to allocate those resources. I think probably at some point it would be ideal, like we did with CARES funding, to adopt a specific budget, a specific allocation plan. But it's probably a little too early for that, as we're still learning how these funds can be used. I included in your packet a couple of things. The first one is, I'm not sure if yours is colored, it's printed in color, but it's, it looks like this. And this was a document from Minnesota Management Budget. Pretty good summary, very high level. But kind of give you a sense of how these resources can be used. There are some similarities with CARES funding, but there are some important differences. Generally, you can use these resources for your pandemic response and so on and so forth. Vaccinations, testing, what have you. One of the big differences with CARES, I should point out right away, was with CARES funding, there was a very broad definition that allowed you to use CARES funding for your salary and benefit costs. So for example, we attributed virtually all of our public safety, public health, and a good, good portion of our human services salary and benefit costs for that period of time that we could to CARES funding. With the American Rescue Plan Act funding, it's much more restrictive. And you're supposed to attribute it to only those positions which are very specifically involved in your pandemic response. So it's not this broad assumption anymore. That certainly allowed us to retain quite a bit of those CARES funding, the CARES funding internal to the county. But again, that's, that's a big difference with American Rescue Plan Act funds. Another big difference is you can use the ARPA funds to replace lost revenue. So for example, in the jail where we had our prison, our inmate populations go down dramatically. We weren't boarding inmates. We can use these to replace that lost revenue. And I think you can go back a couple of years. So that's going to be another opportunity for us to retain some of those. And that's, that amounts over the span of about three years, that's several hundred thousand dollars of lost revenue. It's one of the big ones I can think of. Another big difference, of course, we've been talking a lot about this, is, is infrastructure. Water, wastewater, your city, or broadband. And that's a significant difference from CARES funding is broadband. And then you can see in the summary, a few others that are again similar to CARES. You can use these resources for grants to businesses and nonprofits that suffered adverse consequences as a result of the pandemic. You can use it for housing. One of the things that kind of catches my eye as I'm looking at this list, many of these things are services. And, and, and I think there's some challenge in funding services with one-time money. So I think that's an issue I guess we'll have to think about as, as the board looks at how these funds should be used is, would you make commitments to a service? And then what, how is that funded and once, once those resources go away? So something to think about. Let's see here, any, a few things I want to point out. We do already have half of our $7.9 million in the bank. That's good. A couple of things in terms of timeframe. You have until the end of December of 2024 to obligate the resources and the end of '26 to actually spend them. So for example, if you had contracts in place by the end of '24, that would be good. That would be considered an obligation, and you'd have until the end of '26 to actually spend the resources. I included in this packet some more detailed, this is a, this starting on page, my handwritten page one, U.S. Department of Treasury Q and A. This really excerpts the very lengthy, there's, there's this document out there called Interim Final Rule. And only the federal government could come up with that, that title, interim final. Interim final.
Final rule.
Interim finals. Anyway, there's this extremely lengthy interim final rule out there, which describes how these resources can be used. This document, I think, attempts to summarize some of that. So hopefully you found it useful in terms of how these resources can be used. If you have time to read it, if you're interested in actually reading the entire rule, I'm happy to email a link to. It goes on and on and on. You know, I've done a couple of webinars. There's more webinars coming. There's more guidance coming out, and we'll continue to learn more about this. Let's see. What I was saying, I'll be quiet, is I, I was at a recent, recent Benton Economic Partnership meeting. And there was some discussion about whether BEP was interested in using these resources for additional business assistance grants. And the opinion at that time was no, that they were not. It doesn't mean that you can't, of course, that would be permissible. I think BEP is saying, we don't feel that we want to run another business assistance grant program. But of course, the county still could. It just had to probably find another way to do that. So I guess at this point, I'm just curious to hear some discussion from you all. Where you see these resources going? And maybe to you.
Any questions? Otherwise, I was wondering about, so we designated 35,000, 45,000 to Foley for the study? You know, for fiber and that. Is that something we could grab out of here?
Absolutely, right. I think.
Reading it, that's what I thought, but.
Right. As we, as we dig deeper into this fiber issue, the broadband committee is looking at possibly working with a consulting firm to help us understand what areas of our county are underserved or unserved and so on. And I think we could use those resources for that, absolutely. You bet.
I was talking to Bristol from Langol, and I think they're going to take a portion of theirs, and they're going to send something out to every member in the township on how they feel their broadband is. And they know they're only going to get 15% of them back, you know. But he said if you get 15%, you'd kind of keep a map of where they're at. He thought they'd get a good idea of how they're underserved. He was going to try and promote that to the rest of the townships, that they should try and do that too. That, you know, and he said, not just do you have, have service, but is your service, you know, like on a scale of one to 10, is it a 10 or is it a two?
What I had for you is possibly it might be advisable to hold off making any kind of, you know, global commitments until we understand what's broadband going to cost.
Right.
I guess you could, for example, today, say arbitrarily, well, we're going to spend X percent of our resources on broadband. But maybe instead it would be a good idea just to wait and see what is it going to cost to fulfill the board's vision for broadband?
And I think they're looking at, they're going to have a hard time spending, or I think they're getting 110, 15,000 bucks. But they're going to have a hard time spending that, so, you know, there's possible money that would come, you know, can they partner with us or whatever, so.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
And I think this will come out in our overview, what our last meetings were. But we are inviting all the townships in to go over a plan and to help kind of give them a view of what, what we're thinking, bring them into the fold, and see how they can, they can also assist.
Mr. Chair, Monte, you asked for a little bit of input. I'll give it again as regards to this ARP money. From my perspective, my opinion hasn't changed, that this is special project money. I'm personally not interested in any services with this money. And until I see some different information, that's still how I feel about that.
Okay. Makes sense. Yeah. Okay. Well, I, I was thinking I probably should also ask departments, do they have any, any ideas or projects? You know, we went through this same exercise with CARES funding. And departments identified many very useful projects, which we've implemented most of those by now. I'm not sure really, there's many more opportunities left out there with our departments, but there's no harm certainly in asking about, hey, departments have any technology ideas or facility ideas, what have you, that these could be used for? So I'll ask that question again somewhat sometime soon.
Mr. Chair, Monte, you sent out a letter to all the townships, correct?
I did, yes.
Did you hear anything back from the townships?
You know, let's see. I've heard back from WATAP. And WATAP apparently has already identified some, some fiber projects in their township. I don't have details in terms of, well, who are they going to work with to get this fiber into ground? I don't know. St. George Township contacted me and said, they asked, if we turn our resources over to the county, can we be assured that they'll be spent in our township? And I said that would take probably some sort of agreement, written agreement between the township and the county. And I'll ask our county auditor's office to start working on that. Those are two I've heard from so far.
I do think it's important that if the township is going to relinquish the money to us, that we use it in their township, you know, broadband, by all means, would be one of those.
There's about 1.5 million out there amongst all of our townships that's, that is identified.
The next question is, you said WATAP was going to use on their broadband too. Broadband too. I had a tough night. So are we bringing them to the table too then, Jared?
Absolutely.
They invited.
Yeah, they're invited to come and, and kind of hear our plan. I think it, I think it behooves everybody to work together instead of recreating the wheel.
And Mr. Chair, and just to reiterate what Commissioner Kupinski said, with our meeting coming up next Monday, we actually made it an evening meeting to try to get as many township supervisor, you know, township officials there that we possibly could. And Amanda's heading up the invite to that, so that was probably done last week, I'm assuming.
That's a great idea.
Point of doing it in the evening.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see what WATAP has in store to make sure that we piggyback together instead of them doing it on their own.
Exactly.
Okay. Hey, my goal this morning was just to share some information. Hear any feedback that you all have. That's good to go. Good to know. Again, this is, the nice thing about CARES is we have the luxury of a little more time to come up with a, probably a little more thoughtful plan and not under the rush that we did with CARES, so.
Steve?
Mr. Chair, so yesterday at our district meeting, this was talked about a lot too, about how all the other counties and everything are going to use all their stuff. And everybody was about broadband. Only to find out, thank God, we got two members on the board that spearred this project, knowing that we're miles ahead of all the other counties right now of what we have in place and started.
We have one county that's just going to spend it as they will, from what I understand, on anything and then worry about it later. That's what we were told.
One thing that they brought up too, though I know we could have did this on our commissioner concerns, but one thing that one county did is that they're going to allocate only half of their money now and wait to make sure that they get the other half in December.
That's good, good, Hugh.
I made a note of that. That was a good point.
It was a very valid point.
The second half is supposed to arrive in a year, in a year from now. Right, yeah. I guess things could change. That's a good point.
It is. It's a valid point.
You know, the law could change if something dire happens.
Correct.
Don't eat that egg on our face.
But as I get more information and summaries and things like that, I'll, I'll share. I won't, I'll try not to bombard you with too much. As I see good summaries, I'll share those, I'll share those with you. So, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. I just want to reiterate what Commissioner Johnson said. I too am not in favor of spending these on services at this point. I think there's a lot of other things that we could spend this money on to better the county, move them forward on projects per se, so.
Thanks a lot.
Then your next item?
If I made in, the next item was the initial terms of St. Cloud Regional Airport Authority members. So apparently the authority had, had an introductory meeting. And they're asking the counties to weigh in on the initial terms of authority board members. And you see in attachment, the memo from Bill Towel and the proposed initial terms for the nine authority members. And I think Bill, Bill said something, the authority was asking the administrators to have an opinion about this. I didn't feel that was appropriate for me to do that. I thought I should bring this to you all for a discussion. Again, you can see where the two Benton County folks would fall. Mayor Hunstinger, one, one-year term, and then John Quaidia, two-year term. And there's a bit of rationale that, that Bill included in his memo. Thoughts on this, this idea? And I should just mention, Mr. Chair, is after these initial terms are served, these folks would be eligible for three additional three-year terms. So that's three additional three-year terms. And of course, the initial terms are for the purposes of staggering, so.
So I did, Mr. Chair, I did have a conversation with Mr. Hunstinger about this prior to all of this coming forth. And, and I did suggest that they don't do this until the airport authority approves all of this. So that's why this was stagnant for a while. So, and that's 2022, hopefully, when it's going to be approved. And then that's when their, their term years would start.
So they really can't start until this?
That is correct.
They recognize that it's a regional taxing authority?
So they're just right now an advisory board.
Okay.
Exactly. Yep.
So none of this stuff would take in effect until it was approved. But I think it's a good idea, you know.
Looks like you said, Mr. Heinon, the start date of January 1st of '22.
And/or when it gets approved. My start date would be with the terms. And I'm assuming, I'm just assuming that even when the terms are up, if they've been valid members, they'll be reappointed by that advise, by that board, you know, but that's up to them. I have a hard time focusing in on this too, because this is just supposed to be them. It's not supposed to be us anymore, even though there's somewhat of an advisory board right now.
Unfortunately, is the resolution which established this organization did not stipulate how the initial terms were to be served. So it's like, well, who decides? And I think they wanted the county, or the county and the city to decide, so.
I'm okay with this, but in my opinion, this is their decision, not our decision. This is their decision.
It's their decision, but I tend to differ because there are appointees. We, you know, when it comes for the second term of some of these, if we are not happy with the people that we have in place, we can replace them.
Of course, always. That is always true.
So I mean, it is our decision to have them there, so I think that that part's valid.
So true, but after that point in time when it is established, we would have to get feedback from the chair and the vice chair to make sure that, you know, they seem comfortable with everybody that's there.
Or just, you know, then will be public meeting, and we'll be able to look at comments and actions and stuff like that. And, you know, not everybody will probably be happy with what everybody's decision is.
Probably not. Was Mayor Kurt okay with this? Does he know about this?
I haven't talked to Mayor Hunstinger about this, but they knew fully that there was going to be terms, term limits and everything, so.
Yeah, again, this is just the initial terms. So.
Mr. Chair, Monte, just looking for consensus from us?
Yeah, just looking for consensus. Are you okay with this? Any objections?
I'm fine.
Generally seems okay? All right. I just wanted to make sure that we were fine. All right. Good deal. Thanks a lot. The next two items are the letters of understanding. So these are the first letters of understanding we have regarding the class and study implementation. The first one is with Teamsters Local 320. This represents the licensed essential supervisors. These are, for example, your patrol sergeants, your captain, and the detective lieutenant, those folks. And basically, the letter of understanding says is that these folks will be placed on the new David Drown recommended pay grid as of July 1st. They'd be placed at whatever step results in an increase of where they are now. And that, of course, varies from employee. They'd be placed at whatever step results in an increase of where they are now, and that, of course, varies from employee to employee. And, uh, that's really the, the sum of it, uh, with the letter of understanding, quite straightforward. And, and, uh, this group has ratified, you do, the, uh, we have the signed LOU for board chair signature. I did not have that one when this was prepared, but we now have the signed LOU from the group, yep. So, any questions?
We need action on this?
Please, yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt a letter of understanding with a Teamsters Local 320, representing the licensed essential supervisors to implement the 2021 classification and compensation study.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carried.
All right, thank you. And the next one, it would be the exact same LOU, but instead with the deputy, this is LALS, the Deputy Detective and Court Security Officer Group. They have also ratified, and I received this morning, the signed LOU for the board chair signature. So, other, otherwise, everything else is identical.
I'll make a motion again. Adopt a letter of understanding with Law Enforcement Labor Services Incorporated, representing deputy sheriffs, detectives, and court, court security officers to implement the 2021 classification and compensation study.
Second.
All right.
Motion's been made in second to adopt the letter of understanding from Law Enforcement Labor Services. Um, any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Thanks, Monty.
And, and, and just to mention is, that represents two of our eight bar units, and we have meetings scheduled with the remaining six.
A lot of meetings.
Yeah.
At this time, we'll recess the regular board meeting and conduct a human services meeting, and we're fine with the time, so I'll turn it over to Commissioner Hein.
At this time, we'll call the other, the human services board meeting. Anything to add to the agenda?
Um, I have one thing and an invitation to a groundbreaking ceremony.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the amended agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, we only got one on the consent agenda. Anyone want to pull, approve the amendments?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's approved. Okay, approved contracts for the City of Rice and the Railroad Project. Sam? Oh, okay, sorry. Sandy?
I'll have Sam come up.
I apologize, I didn't make the call on this one, but I did have all the information, so.
Yeah, we got a chance to connect, uh, beforehand. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Uh, so, the contract, as I had mentioned last week, was in regards to a project we had been working on with the City of Rice for a few years now. Uh, ship's mission is always to increase healthy eating and active transportation while decreasing tobacco use through policy systems and environmental changes. And in turn, improving the health of the community and lowering healthcare costs. So the project that we've been working on with the City of Rice was in regards to safe routes to school. And, um, one of the issues that was brought up when they were working on their safe routes to school plan, and then a couple of years ago, their parks and trails planning was the railroad. All of the, not all of the, but a good chunk of the residents live on one side of the railroad tracks, and everything else is on the opposite side of the railroad tracks, specifically the elementary school. So the city really wanted to work on improving that crossing. And so this contract would allow them to work with an engineering company to provide them with some options to fix the, the crossing there. Um, it by no means commits the county to funding any implementation of what's proposed, uh, but at least provides them with really specifics that they could then take to apply for grant funding elsewhere.
Any questions for Sam?
Nope, I'm good.
I think we discussed it pretty well at our call.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for this contract for the City of Rice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Thanks, Sam.
And the only other thing I have is an invitation to the Stearns County Groundbreaking Ceremony for their new behavioral health, um, building that we got a four-county grant for. Um, so that is June 24th at 10:00 AM, rain or shine, and I can hand off invitations.
Oh, okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Yep, thank you very much. Anything else?
No.
Motion to adjourn the, uh, Human Services Board, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 We're adjourned at 9:34. I'll turn it back over to the chair. Thank you. Wait. Don't worry about it.
This time, we'll reconvene the county board meeting, and Chris Bird, Public Works.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
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 Just allow me one moment here. I always like to bring things up on the screen, so we have it in front of us. The first item I have before you is, um, adoption of our five-year road construction CIP program. So we've discussed this, I feel extensively, on a road tour that we conducted, uh, last month. A couple of committee of the holes, I think we had a committee of the hole even before our road tour, and we had a recent one a couple of weeks ago. So I prepared this document. Well, first thing I wanna say is if this is adopted, this document that you see before you would be published on our website. So it'll be out there for public view and, and public, uh, consumption. And so I have a little statement kinda just reiterating, you know, kind of our road system, so the public knows what we're dealing with. It kinda maybe helps put into scope what our challenges are with coming up with a, a five-year road construction program. But, you know, you commissioners know that, you know, road construction projects very rarely get implemented, planned, designed, and constructed in one year. It's a multi-year process, thus the need to have a five-year plan, uh, so we can look ahead and start doing planning on future projects now. So, um, in this plan that would be published to the website is each five years, kind of in a table format, uh, showing the construction projects, uh, that we've discussed and decided what year to place those in. I will add that not all the projects that are in, that are placed in a specific year are fully funded. We'll jump ahead to the big one, Casatu in year four. Um, we do not have all the funds in place today, uh, to fully construct that $4.8 million project. It's being placed under a state aid column. Um, it is eligible to use state aid, but we will not have enough state aid dollars to you, to do it in that year. So what that means tells me, as your Public Works Director, County Highway Engineer, in the next couple of years, I need to be exploring other funding options, funding grants, local road improvement program grants, if we have another round of those, exploring federal funding options, and use those at our disposal. Um, and then, as it gets closer, that's, maybe that's something of discussion that we would talk about. Also, in year five, uh, County Road 10 down by Dwelm, County Road 23, um, those are not fully funded either. So we'd have to be looking at other funding options. Uh, projects like 43 here, uh, that's asterisks, uh, we're trying to coordinate that with the City of Foley. So it's kind of as a placeholder in our five-year plan. We may move that around, we may move that up, if, uh, City of Foley is ready to do their, uh, utilities underneath the roadway, we sooner than that. So it's just kinda in year five as kind of a placeholder, so we have an allocation of funding for it in the next five years, using our local road fund, which would be, uh, wheelage tax dollars, funding that. Uh, one other project I do wanna point out in year three, reconstruction within the City of Gilman, our Casau III and Casau V project. I've been in communications with the City of Gilman. They have hired a consultant engineer to look at their sewer utility underneath our roadway. Um, their big challenge right now is funding. That's a big task, uh, for a city like, uh, Gilman to, to take on. I think we're hopeful that they get some kinda ARP money as well, cause that's water, uh, it was one of the infrastructure things that was specifically listed, uh, for cities. I think they also wanna take the opportunity to do some improvements on, they only have two city streets, really. Um, now would be the time, if we have contractors in the area, to reconstruct those. But once again, that's a big, tall order for them, um, to take on. So that's another one that's kinda called out specifically in our five-year plan, that that could move, uh, dependent on, uh, City of Gilman. And so that, that may move around to a later year in year five. But if we get to year five and they still don't have a means to fully fund their portion of it, it may be cause for us to sit down and discuss and look at our condition of our roadway. Maybe we have to move forward with something independent of them, so. Um, other things I just wanna add, with our current revenue, uh, streams projected out for the five years, this is really all that we could accomplish on the next five years of our road construction program. I do put in another list of projects, once again, I'm just hoping that this provides perspective to the public. These are other projects that we really should be looking at in the next five years, but there's just absolutely no way we could implement those with our current funding stream. So I think it's worth us acknowledging as a department that, yeah, there's other things that we know need to be done out there. We just can't accomplish everything that probably should be done over the next five years. One of these things, though, as we come back and revisit this plan every year, we add on to that fifth year. Maybe, maybe things change and we can pull a project or two off this unfunded list and put it in that five-year, fifth year as we discuss it this time next year. So, uh, with that being said, I present to you the Benton County Five-Year Road Improvement, uh, Program, and ask you to consider it for, for adoption.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'll move adoption of the five-year road construction improvement plan. I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second to approve the five-year, uh, road construction program. Um, I would think you hear more and more that infrastructure bill is gonna come forward, so. This is, you know, yeah, we can adopt it, but we got projects that could go up or down depending on, you know, I mean, it's a given that if they adopt this, counties are gonna receive some funding.
Yeah, we're all hopeful. I'm paying attention to, um, yeah, the federal level. There's a lot of talk with infrastructure at the federal level, and. It's encouraging. I think there's more talk than we've seen in, in recent years regarding that.
And they've moved the numbers, you know, they've moved the numbers up instead of down, so I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, that is.
And Mr. Chair, just to reiterate, I, I know we're all at the cow. I, I, I think there's a complete understanding that this is a plan and that we can move, so.
Yeah, very good. I think that's worth acknowledging. We need some direction. We may have to alter our direction at some point, but yeah, at least this provides us a direction on what we're working towards.
Right.
You know, you could see, you could see a change in year two as far as, you know, but it's just a plan.
And again, that's why we review it every year.
Yeah. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Does anybody know what the population is Gilman is? Is it like 100? Is that 300?
I don't.
Well, cause yesterday in our district meeting, it came out to be like 102 or 105 dollar per capita is what they would be receiving on AR, ARP money.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I think on the highway it says 87 to tell you the truth.
Yeah.
I'm not 100% sure, but.
I guess what I was going is, I, I don't think they should be banking a ton on, on a per capita for water and sewer.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they're, what they wanna do for their street improvements and their sewer lines to their lagoons, it was in the millions of dollars that they would need, and that's, that's tough. But it's one of those things we, I think we all recognize, their lines are old, our roadway is old. Now's the time to address that.
Yeah.
Just coming up with the funds to do it, so, sure.
They should, they should just pipe and hook in the Foley, as long as they go in St. Cloud anyway.
Leave that up to Gilman, huh?
Yeah, leave that up to Gilman. So, so we have a motion and a second to approve. Neil, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Very good. Thank you for that approval. Um, I guess the next thing on the agenda, I just wanted to provide another update on County Road 55 construction projects, since we did talk about it at, uh, um, last board meeting. We had some meetings with the City of, uh, Rice, uh, last week. A, a, and the big thing was, we wanted to make sure that they had some assurances that any future utilities, uh, that they wanna, uh, construct could be placed in our roadway. I think we're all hopeful that Rice continues to grow. That's good for Rice, it's good for the county as a whole. Um, we were able to, and I, I gotta thank my highway accountant. She actually found the statute reference, uh, for me that says that public utilities, and it specifically mentioned water and sewer, uh, could be placed within highway easements. So we shared that with their attorney on Friday afternoon, and they found that to be acceptable. What I understand, I got an email just before I stepped up here. Uh, yesterday, they reached out to, uh, all the landowners, uh, and I think we're just waiting for them to sign that new paperwork that has easement language that we all agree, agree to. So we're hoping that can still happen today. Our contractor is out of room to work, uh, starting tomorrow. So, um, we're hoping that still today, or even early tomorrow, we see things with signatures on it, and we feel comfortable letting the contractor continue moving dirt within the city limits of, of Rice, so. We've got a lot of verbal con, uh, concurrence from landowners. There was one, uh, contentious landowner that was holding out, but we got a verbal that they are okay with the terms of the, the purchase agreement now, so. So that's, that's a little bit of that. We're hopeful that things still are progressing as we talk, eh, and we can keep the contractor moving dirt throughout the rest of the day and tomorrow.
Maybe I'll have to haul water or something, because it's gotta be really dry up there.
It is, and well, we talked about it over and over, the sandy soils, they, you can't put enough water on that, that material right now.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and excuse me, Chris, if I've asked this before, but are there any, uh, penalties against us for delay on those contractors?
Well, yeah, so, the risk we run is if we get to the point that they can no longer work and they have iron or construction equipment sitting there, they, they may want to move that to another project, and they would hit us up for a change order for cost to remobilize that back to the project. That's what we look at. And then there's other things that we look at too. At the end of the project, we had a calendar completion date that we wanted all the work to be completed and open to traffic, and if they don't meet that, the contract said that there is, yeah, uh, a penalty of $1,500 a day. Do we assess that to them, or do we forego that? Or do we expect some other entity to help pay those, those costs? And we call those liquidated damages, and, and contractually and statutorily, that, that's a way for us to recoup some of our additional administrative costs for a project not getting completed when we anticipate it.
I, I think on that, we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it. I don't think we need to have any discussion on, on right now.
The good news is that things are going very well, and things are progressing very well for the contractor. So from a construction standpoint, things are going well, and that's, that's maybe the downside of not having easements in place yet, is that, uh, we're running out of places to keep that contractor working.
From what I understand, they should get them signed today.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping.
I mean, everybody is agreed.
Yeah.
To, to the deal.
Mr. Chair, we did have a very good meeting with Rice last week. I don't remember what day it was anymore.
Friday.
Friday?
Yeah.
Is that what it was, Friday? Okay. Very good meeting, and we did let them know that, you know, we're on a time crunch, so we gotta have this stuff done before Wednesday.
Good, glad to hear it.
So, everyone's laid out. Very good, very good meeting. Easy.
Can you, if, if everything gets said and done, can you send us an email out?
Oh, yeah, I can do that. I will certainly keep the board informed, so.
Alright, thanks. Any other questions for Chris?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I see Mr. Ebner walked in, or either Chris or Mr. Ebner could give us a quick update on County Road 4's bridge, where things are at with that.
You want to open?
Go ahead, that was gone last week. It should be completely open, so.
I see that it's open. I see that they're working on it. I just, I'm not sure what the.
Yes, so, okay, to, to back up, what we did, so, that's a concrete, uh, channel span. It's got concrete beams on it, and it has a bituminous driving surface on it. So, we wanted to replace that driving surface, cause it had been all cracked up, and the idea is we wanna keep water from intruding into the pavement and getting to the, the steel girders and, or not the steel, the, the steel within the concrete girders and corrode it. So, we removed that, our, our mate, your guys, your crew removed the surface, right? And we had that part of our patching project that is completed by a contractor. One of the things that gets done before that bituminous gets laid down is a waterproofing membrane to seal up all the joints within the concrete, uh, between the concrete beams. So, we had, uh, an understanding that the contractor would be in on a Monday. Well, things, but on their side, didn't pan out. They were not able to come in that Monday. Um, and we decided to go ahead and close the bridge down at that point, uh, well, after that Monday. We did have it open to keep traffic go through there, but when we found out it was gonna be another week before they would be in, um, we decided to go ahead and close the bridge until they got that completed. Uh, they did get that, uh, completed last week. We still have new guard rail that we need to put in on all four corners of the bridge, and I'm not sure when that'll happen. I think your crew's probably dressing up the shoulder next to where they paved on each corner of the bridge. We're putting black dirt in along the edge of the blacktop, so we can do it now before the guard railing goes.
We're putting black dirt in along the edge of the blacktop so we can do it now before the guard railing goes in. Then we're rip wrapping some areas that's really steep, putting blanket fabric down and putting granite rock over that, so. After today, we should be completed with that. We'll have it seeded and then I'll make a call to H and R and they'll come out and schedule when they can come out to up at guard railing.
And did I understand you, Mark, they say they're gonna, they're pounding the guard rail through the asphalt?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, it'll be metal, metal I-beams that'll be pounded through the blacktop, then no weeds will grow around and it'll look nice.
Right, no maintenance, yeah.
Nice and neat.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, we're upgrading the guard rail. We had substandard guard rail on each uh, what we call turn downs. If you recall, the guard rail just kinda dove down into the ground. That doesn't meet any kind of safety standards today. So we try to address the bridge a year that has that kind of guard rail and get those upgraded to current standards.
And you're looking roughly, just to give you an idea, anywhere from thirty-seven to forty thousand dollars a year just to replace one bridge with guard railing.
Wow, that that does not include the membrane membrane upgrade?
No, that's just guard rail.
That's just new steel guard rail at all four corners of the bridge.
Okay.
Um, Chris, so when you had the, did we do an assessment on the concrete beams under there or not?
Uh, yeah, we, well, that bridge gets inspected every two years as part of our normal inspection program. And we, yeah, we've been underneath that this year too, looking at it. The the beams are in really good uh condition. I wanna say that was nineteen eighty-nine is when that bridge was constructed. So in the age of bridges, it's still pretty young bridge. We hope to get at least seventy-five years out of that. So things are in good condition now. We wanna keep it that way, though.
And what's the traffic on there, eleven hundred a day or so?
I think it's at least that. It's probably pushing fifteen hundred or so, I think, so.
The only part that I go back is when we did the assessment on the, you know, the bridge over the Mississippi on twenty-nine and you brought those pictures back with the beams. I mean, we don't wanna get to that point.
Exactly.
You know?
Exactly right. Yeah, that's, it's really critical for us to seal up any cracks on on bridges as soon as we can to keep that water.
That was pretty nasty.
It was, yeah.
Just another eye opener.
Yeah, it was. I mean, so that, when you were talking about bridge assessment taken off the deck and that, it's like, wow, maybe the beams are not, you know.
Sure.
Good to hear that we're in great shape there.
Yep, that was in good shape.
Thanks, Chris and Mark. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Um, Commissioner Concerns, anybody have any? Uh, we'll do the Commissioner Meeting Updates first. Anybody wanna start?
Somebody has to start.
I can go.
Go ahead.
Alright, who you wanna go?
No.
Okay. Alright, well, I've had quite a few. So we'll start with the MICA one cuz that was probably the quickest one I've been on so far.
I didn't even make it.
So the MICA one was very quick, uh, probably an hour. But uh um the broad, in the broadband area, cuz we've been talking a lot about broadband. It was actually brought up yesterday uh as well. They got seventy million factored in to the uh to the budget for that. At the state level, their their goal is a hundred and twenty million. But uh uh, you know, I was telling Commissioner Hyndon yesterday, seventy million is a drop in the bucket when you come to a state level. It's it's a very small number, so uh I think they're really relying on people with this A R P money to uh to spend that money on broadband. Um, they also, uh, MICA mentioned, this actually got brought up yesterday too, is a uh revenue loss tool that they've got put together uh MICA on the state level. So it's an actual calculator where you can put, you know, revenue loss in there and then be able to utilize A R P uh R P money for that. Um, they did this broad, this was brought up a little earlier. Um, the state will be um sending businesses for this additional funding to the county level versus the uh um paying them out at the state level. So they're redirecting any businesses that want additional funding for lost revenue um to the county level, which we thought was um not so, not so fun. But uh but uh I I think we should let Amanda know on that one. That was really about it on the MICA deal that that I thought was extremely important. The St. Cloud A P O, we went through a absolute bunch of budgets. Uh, the draft fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five uh Transportation Improvement Program. Uh, this this one here has to deal with uh the Sock Rapids Project that'll happen. Um, the Sock Rapids is funding that one um locally right now and then being refunded in two thousand twenty-four. Uh, we went through the Transit uh of Minnesota Mobility Management Grants. They're talking about adding mobile or a Metro Bus building on the west side of St. Cloud. Uh, it sounds like towards the old uh or towards the uh the license center out that way.
Correct, yep.
So.
Is that a maintenance building or a?
They just said a a uh, I think it would be a maintenance and an actual um, cuz they're saying Metro Bus is growing.
Could be a hub, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be a hub out there, so.
You talking to Stearns County uh spot out on the west end there?
Yep, correct, yeah. Yep, um, they uh considered the uh uh fiscal year twenty twenty-one Regional Infrastructure uh Investment Plan, the R I I P. Uh, another acronym, but uh uh they provide, basically this provides a public uh not a one-stop shop uh finding out all area road improvement projects. Um, uh, so people can go right there and figure out what's going on in each area. They only did a one-year uh R I I P, um, basically instead of a four-year at this point. Um, we went into priorities and I brought up the fact that we kinda did the same thing is we we had extensive talks in our cowl about the money we spend getting a project ready. And then when that gets put four years down the road, that money has to be respent again to figure out where we're at. And uh and everybody agreed and and basically said, you know, we gotta, when we put our one year together, we gotta really stick to that unless something financially just absolutely cannot happen. Um, Emergency Services Board, uh, we went over preliminary budgets. Uh, the full budget will be voted on next meeting. Uh, went through again a ton of reports. Uh, they were looking for um uh additional funding for the this. We've got the most prestigious radio um program in the country. Uh, yesterday, uh, was it Bill Martinson? He brought up that the state has graciously put in three million dollars for upkeep, which is a drop in the bucket to upkeep this huge radio pro statewide radio program, so uh hopefully there's more money coming. Foley Fiber, um, we brought up a few things. We're bringing in the uh the townships, trying to get them involved. Um, there's a lot of money that could assist in this project. Everybody's looking for the the same goal, broadband throughout the county. Um, uh, Monty brought up uh reaching out to Finley, uh, the the uh consultant to help along with that process. And I think I I think if if we all sat back, there's a lot of counties that are not nearly as far as we are on this. And I gotta thank the board previous to us because you guys have been looking at this for a very long time. And we just happened to get in at the right time with money that's being coming from the federal government, so uh.
And and the Foley project.
And the Foley project, absolutely. Yeah, we, I mean, that 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 allows us the right of ways, that allows everything to happen, so. Uh, there's, there's a lot of things that were already in the process before uh we got involved, so. Then uh last night, uh, one of my other boards, that wasn't a county board, is my state legislative fire um um board that I'm on. That could actually be a very, it won't happen, it's gonna happen right away. Um, the fire districts got approved in the final bill last night, the the actual approved bill. And it was kudos going everywhere on this board, which I'm the only volunteer on this board. The problem with this is I've talked to somebody that is um very uh very much into the fire service and we both agree that this is the state's way of putting fire service onto the county level and funding.
Again.
And this could be, this could be very bad because now now basically with this fire districts, they're basically saying it's a taxing district. So you can tax to to increase your your fire support, your 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 service, everything like that. So if the state isn't giving enough money, you can then make a district and assess people. So this is in the final bill and this has been a long time coming. This has been for the last six, seven years trying to get pushed through and it, this time it got pushed. So that came down last night about seven o'clock. So just something to keep an eye on. And I think that's all I got right now.
Steve?
Oh, that's interesting. Uh, I've had a lot of meetings, but a lot of them were just phone call conversation meetings, which was actually very pleasant. Uh, the other one was the Careers uh Solutions Joint Powers Board. We had a meeting last week on Thursday. Sorry, I thought I heard a phone. Sorry, Mr. Chair. Anyway, they're gonna have an open house today, this afternoon. They're gonna have fifty companies or fifty businesses out in the parking lot to have a work or a program prob.
That was me.
So we got fifty businesses signed up to be out in the parking lot for a job share.
Okay.
So anybody can come there and uh go see what they have to offer and hire on the spot or or whatever. You know, so Career Solutions, Career uh Force, they actually help the businesses uh train employees. You know, and then there was some more talk about D, but I don't really wanna get into that one yet because I stirred up a hornet's nest. And we'll uh we'll get through that, huh? Yeah, there'll be more to come about, come with that. Uh, actually, and then the uh the chair of the L W D B is retiring. So they've gotta look for new people on their end. Uh, what else? And then I had, one of my other ones was pretty, pretty cool to me cuz I sit on the uh Sock Rapids Historical Society Board. And we got a memo out by some uh some individual about a solar compass that's really old, back in the nineteen fifties. And it's the J A Stanton actually used it in the city of Sock Rapids. And we had to throw out some money for it. But I have pictures of it. It's pretty cool. I know Tasha's doing an article on that and that'll be pretty neat to see, but I'll pass my phone around. It's pretty, pretty interesting, so we acquired that and that'll be a, just another good feature inside that museum. It's really cool. More to come, so I'm assuming Tasha, I mean, I'm I'm assuming she's, Natasha's going to put that in the Herald in the next couple meetings, a couple papers, yeah. So please look at that. It's pretty interesting.
Yeah, looks like a complicated.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I I haven't seen it in person yet because we haven't had a meeting, so, but.
They even, even did some uh up in Kuchichin County as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's pretty.
Got her own.
Okay.
It's pretty cool, pretty cool, so. Okay, and then just the district meeting yesterday, of course, we were all there and the first half is always interesting and the second half is.
Okay.
So I wish Monty would have been there, but that's alright.
Yeah.
It's all good.
Was lunch good?
It's all good.
It was a box lunch.
Ah.
Yeah.
So don't worry, Monty, we talked to the other administrators there and everything's good.
Yeah.
Commissioner Pop did go up front and do his speech unlike others that just stood at their table.
Yeah.
Very good job.
Mike, though.
No, I didn't use the mic.
He didn't eat it.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um, Commissioner Slungin?
Um, I was also on the Career Solution and R S V P. Um, the uh Wake Park Amphitheater is now open. And they'll be doing events out there. Um, the Beach Boys are supposed to be coming in August. Um. They have a lot of fundraising that they're doing, um, working with Bratsales and the, at the Rocks. Um, there's gonna be something at Beaver Island. And um, they're um working on opening up like the Whitney Center and other places that they've had open before to get more involvement. Um, they need all kinds of volunteers yet cuz they lost a lot when they shut everything down and they need to get back up and.
I think over the course of the years, we've heard that every time from R S V P that they're always in need of volunteers.
I think they've expanded um down into Wright County and um in the Elk River area. So, yeah, it's getting bigger and doing good. And I think that's about it for me.
Okay, Scott?
Um, so of course Commissioner Kapinski, as usual, stole the thunder for the broadband committee meeting, so continue any updates on that. Uh, we did, Commissioner Pop and I had our tri-county extension committee meetings last week in St. Cloud, which actually was the first one that I was able to attend in person. I I was able to attend on a a virtual one before that. Um, so it was nice to meet the other county commissioners who were involved with that. Um, I thought it was interesting breakdown. There there are three full-time educators right now between the three counties. Uh, Benton's got a point six-two F T E, Stearns one point nine-three and Morrison a point four-five, so that equals the three-point oh F T E. Uh, there is some discussion about potentially bringing uh Sherburne County in if they're interested and so we've uh they're pushing some numbers with that. I believe that uh Lori has uh given that information to Sherburne and and we'll see if they're gonna bite on that. That that may be a good addition. As you remember, Dan Martins was involved with Sherburne County also, where I think it was kind of a quad at one time. And so there's a potential for that to come back. Um, we also then um uh had our local extension committee actually last evening. And of course, most of you know Darlene Zofransky is retiring, I believe, after thirty-five years. Uh, she'll be retiring in this August and uh the new staff person will be uh hired as a University of Minnesota uh person, no longer a county employee as such. Um, one other comment I thought was interesting, Ann Olson commented in regards to the Benton County Fair Board. Now is made up of just over half of the people on that board are a four-H affiliation of some sort. So I thought that was pretty interesting. There seems to be a little bit of a turn there in who's representing the county fair board, so that that kinda stood out to me. Um, of course, we had our planning commission meeting last week, as you saw on the consentage on the the Pahala plat, uh, pretty much a straightforward plat and a conditional use permit on an accessory building. Um, that was pretty much it for me. Of course, I was at the attendance of that District Five meeting yesterday, which was my first one. And I would agree with Commissioner Hyndon, the first half was pretty interesting. The second half was kinda just there, so that's it. Thank you.
Okay, um, yeah, the other thing is that we we are having from uh the extension last night that there'll be no budget. There actually is a twelve thousand or thirty-eight thousand dollar.
Twelve thousand for each county.
For each county, a surplus. And they're gonna push that towards the 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 fourth position if Sherburne agrees. Um, and Sherburne would come in at no less, uh, they're gonna propose at no less than the point six-two what Benton County does. Um, they haven't got much extension down in Sherburne County. Um, one concern I have is that I think everybody will be okay. I think uh the livestock person is probably not gonna get bombarded with more work. But I do believe the horticulture and the master gardener, which is Katie Drewitz. I think she's gonna end up with a huge amount more work because they have a big master gardener deal in Sherburne County. And there was discussion on what this fourth fourth person would do as far as that. And a couple of the suggestions came from the S- Stearns County Commissioner, I believe, would be to um, there's water resource and and water management in some of the new uh money that's coming down. And then uh to have that person do that and then the small farms, the small hobby farm person, you know, that there's a lot of interest in, you know, growing on the land, so that was another. And it'll, it'll depend on the tri-county or quad county after we get it up and running, what this person is gonna do. But it'll be a higher through the ex, through the University of Minnesota and it will be budgeted with our tri-county people. Um, I think that committee, both the tri-county and the county extension committees are really in good shape compared to they were like three years ago or two and a half years ago. We were struggling with some of that, so. And then one of the reasons I didn't attend the my uh MICA meeting this year is that I had the C M L E, the C M L E. That's an extended arm of the Great River Regional Library and that has always fallen on. that's an extended arm of the Great River Regional Library. And that has always fallen on, on, um, the same timeframe. And so it was either I, I, I said, either we have to move this because I'm not gonna give up MICA or I will resign, I have to resign from the board. And they moved it. So I thought maybe it would, you know. So they moved it. I can't remember what the date was. I think they moved it to the Friday at noon instead. Um, and it basically, CML deals with all libraries within the region between the, the Great River and the east central one. And a lot of schools, a lot of grant money goes out for them and that's what they do. So we had that meeting in place of MICA. So we got that done. So that'll not be a conflict anymore.
They like you on that board.
I don't know if they do or not. They, they probably learned from the Great River one that a little bit.
You didn't miss a ton on that one.
Okay. Um, and I think that was the only thing that I had, uh, other than when the, what the rest of us were at. So.
Mr. Chair, I got one more. After seeing Jake up here, I, I, I think this guy is everywhere. I, I don't know how much time you, you get off, but, uh, uh, I, with seeing him, I basically wanted to send out a shout to all the, the, uh, local students that graduated this year. He was at the Foley graduation and everything like that. And, and I think, uh, I think, uh, I, the, all between Sock Rapids and Foley, there's a lot of, a lot of great students graduated. Your, uh, your son happened to have pretty good honors, honors there. So.
Thank you.
It was, it was good to see.
Yep.
Okay.
Any Commissioner Concerns? Things you brought up, things that need to be addressed? Ain't hearing none. So then we'll go to Set Committee of the Holes.
Okay. Just a couple.
Just a couple?
Yeah, you've already heard about one. That's the groundbreaking ceremony for the.
Yep.
Behavioral Health Crisis Center. That's June twenty-fourth at ten. I don't have an address in here, but it, it would be at the Central Minnesota Mental Health Center. And maybe that's on.
One, three, two, one, thirteenth Street North.
There it is.
Yep.
Okay. And the second one is you're invited to the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation All Investor and Partner Meeting, August twenty-sixth from four to six. August twenty-sixth from four to six. And this is gonna be at the Corp, Coburn's, uh, corporate headquarters. I believe that's over that I ninety-four industrial park area. Yeah. So again, that's August twenty-sixth from four to six. And just a reminder, we have a committee of the whole here tomorrow at nine to talk about space needs.
Nine or ten? Did I have the date and time?
I have here, this show is nine o'clock.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that tomorrow?
Nine o'clock tomorrow. Nine o'clock tomorrow.
I have it on my calendar too tomorrow.
Nine o'clock tomorrow.
Nine or ten? Nine o'clock.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Yep.
Commissioner Pop and I are on the wrong time zone.
Well, I know we have to stick around for a couple more labor deals. That's why I thought it was at ten.
So nine o'clock tomorrow.
Nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Nine o'clock. So that's all we have. We have those motions to set the cows.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Most men made in second to set the cows. Any? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried?
At this time, we will take a short recess before we go to, uh, closed session.